Good evening, Daytona Beach. And welcome to the March 17th, 2021 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us this evening. And at this time, we would ask that Ms. La Magno review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments subject to these city procedures and compliance with all recommendations from the CDC to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The commission chambers will be closed for in-person attendance by the public. The City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comments and an audio/video feed to the commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided for those who wish to make public comment before the city commission. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the city commission when called upon for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have a limited defined area with social distancing for people waiting to make public comment. In addition, the exterior entryway to City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for persons waiting for permission to enter to make public comment due to space limitations in the lobby. The public may also monitor public meetings from their iPhone, iPad, or other electronic device on the city's website and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate times. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart and use of facial masks mandated to combat the spread of COVID-19. Item number seven is the opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing the yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two-and-a-half-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer for such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magno, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We will now have the invocation led by Commissioner Reed, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner May.
Once again, we stand together and we bow our heads before the throne. We give all honor and grace to the one and only Lord Savior. We pray, Lord, for compassion and courtesy with one another. We pray for dedication and justice, and we pray for diversity and inclusion. We pray that we would respect each and every one of us as we make these decisions on behalf of this city. Lord, we pray that the citizenry would also understand and recognize that decisions that we make are not always easy, but they're the ones that we feel are the best. And when we lay our heads down on a pillow, to be able to say we've done what we believe to have been the best will allow us to rest. Now, as we convene once again tonight, we ask that you would again reign over this meeting, that you would lead us and you would guide us and you would help us to discern what's being presented to us, and that once again, we would give our best decision. As we conclude this meeting tonight, we pray for every household that's here tonight. We pray for our first responders. We pray for our citizens. We pray for our visitors. We thank you, Lord, for a very successful Bike Week. We pray that all who came had a wonderful time, but we also pray that your covering would be over each and every one of those, those individuals and our citizens, as we continue to fight this battle called COVID-19. Now, Lord, we thank you for 50 years for Commissioner Henry. We bless her tonight on her birthday. We give you all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise. In Jesus' name I pray, and for His sake, let us all say, amen.
Amen.
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the March 4th, 2020 executive session, the November 11th swearing-in ceremony, the December 2nd, 2020 executive closed section, the December 9th, 2020 affordable housing workshop, and the January 20th, 2021 regular city commission meeting. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager, a second from Commissioner May. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. This time, we'll have our agenda, and if there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We have one change tonight. We're going to pull item 8C from this agenda, and we'll reschedule it.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said change.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Trager. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, moving on. Item number six, and we have no presentations this evening, so move on to item number seven. This is the opportunity for people to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And I believe I only have one speaker, Mr. Frederick Brown, who's speaking on item 8J.
Yeah, in regards to 8J, I'm very much in favor of this. I do have some concerns, and being a retired engineer, I am concerned about the grade of aluminum, because aluminum, as you know, or as you may not know, is obviously susceptible to damage if it's not the correct grade. There's also methods of weather protection. Again, I haven't had benefit of reading the proposal from 2017, but there's nothing in the description here that indicates any of that. Also, I'd like to see if the city would consider expanding this project to include the railing out front of City Hall. For those of you who don't come up the back way over here, it's iron rusted out, and it's very dangerous. There's some sharp edges over there, especially in the handicap ramp, so I would wish you would consider adding this to the project. Other than that, I'm in favor of getting it done. Thank you.
I have a question, sir.
Yes.
What grade are you suggesting of aluminum?
Well, there's various grades out there. I have to check and see what the latest stuff is available for handrails, but there are different types of aluminum grades out there, T6 and several others that I've used structurally over the years. I'd have to look and see what's available in there. Again, I wasn't prepared for this. I was unfortunately going to speak on another topic that got pulled, so I didn't know I was going to have time for this. But I'd be glad to do the research and stuff for you, but I would hope that the city has an engineer that would be aware of that, as those of us who live on--
I'm sure we do. I just wanted to know what you thought was what we thought, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you don't have a thought, so.
Yeah, again, anything on the beach side is very susceptible to salt corrosion. And there have been tremendous improvements in metallurgy over the years that would help prevent it from rusting out so fast.
All righty, thank you.
All right, thank you.
While we're on that, let me ask you all a question. The handrails on--this is for city staff. Does anyone know the handrails at the library? Are we responsible for those rails that intersect with the river in the library right here? Does anyone know the answer to that?
You're talking about the--
The rails, the rails that are, when you go over to the waterfront--
Yeah.
--and you--
Mm-hmm.
Is that our--
That's ours, on this side, on the waterfront, period.
On the side that's closest to the library?
The metal.
Are we responsible for those rails?
That would be us.
Would you have someone to look at those? Because the last time I was there, I noticed that one of them really gives way, and if you could easily touch it, you might fall in.
Okay.
So I just want to--I mean, I should have said that, not of record, but let's hurry up and send someone, considering all the issues that we have. Okay.
And I don't have any other speakers for the consent agenda.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
So, tonight, we have no public hearing items, so we are going to move on to item 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Timoca North, Community Development District. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance granting the petition of Chris 393 LLC for establishment of a community development district, creating and establishing the Timoca North Community Development District, providing for name, powers, and duties, providing description and boundaries, providing initial members of the Board of Supervisors, providing severability, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Target.
Who made the motion?
Commissioner.
Commissioner May and a second, Commissioner Trager for Delgado.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have questions or comments on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for April 7th. Moving on to item 10B, it's Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, Daytona Beachside Villas, formerly known as W 10 Grand, Planned District Redevelopment, PDRD rezoning of preliminary plat. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone approximately 0.9 acres of property generally located west of South Grandview Avenue between Goodall Avenue and Braddock Avenue from PDRD planned development redevelopment to PDRD planned development redevelopment, approving the Daytona Beachside Villas Plan District Agreement to allow development of the property as a townhome subdivision, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, approving the preliminary plat for the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for April 7th. Moving on to item 10C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment, use specific standards. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Section 5.2.2 of Article 5 of the Land Development Code to amend use specific standards for institutional daycare uses, industrial manufacturing and production uses, and industrial warehousing and freight movement uses, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Henry, a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for April 7th. Moving on to item 10D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Daytona Beach VA OPC PD rezoning to Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 76.1 plus or minus acres of property generally located on the west side of North Williamson Boulevard, approximately 1,800 feet north of LPGA Boulevard, from Volusia County R2 Urban Single Family Residential to PDG Planned Development General. Approving the Daytona Beach VA OPC Plan District Agreement, authorizing the development of the property with an outpatient clinic for the Department of Veterans Affairs and/or other commercial and medical uses, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved. So second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for April 7th. Moving on to item 10E, it's a proposed amendment to the city's police review board ordinance. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 58, Article 5, City Code regarding the Citizens Police Review Board, amending Section 58 200 entitled Establishment Intent, Composition, Term, and Meetings to Include a requirement that the board members should not have personal interests that conflict with the board's duties, amending Section 58 201 entitled Disciplinary Reviews to clarify that the board does not have independent investigative authority and must rely on the completed internal investigation file in making decisions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, a second from Commissioner May. Commissioner, you want to go over this?
I have a question.
What's the rationale here?
I have a question. It says, "No member of the board shall have or hold any employment or contractual relationship that will cause a continuing or frequently recurring conflict between his or her private interests and the performance of his or her public duties." Couldn't they just go ahead and recuse themselves if something came up, rather than forbidding them to be a member of the board? This--
Just, yeah, let's let her answer.
This request directly incorporates the language from the Florida State Statute, Chapter 112.311, conflicting employment of contractual relationship. And the exact words of the state statute is, "No member of the board shall have or hold any employment or contractual relationship that will create a continued or frequently reoccurring conflict between his and her private interests and performance of his or her public duties as a member of the board, or that would impede the full and faithful discharge of those public duties."
Well, I mean, we all have conflicts one time or another with our duties here, and we just recuse ourselves.
I actually, I understand what you're saying, but I believe our city ordinance should, we should be, we should find our candidates to be in compliance with our state statute and the most qualified candidates as well.
So it sounds like we're just trying to hold our boards to a higher standard. That's what we're saying.
Correct. The state statute, correct.
Higher standard than what? What higher standard?
Than what we have now, where it's just, you know, you're on a board, we pick a board, the board is there. I really like the idea, to be honest with you, didn't intend to bring this up, but I like the idea of board members, no matter what the board is, not to have any kind of vested interest in what is going on financially in the city as they're making decisions. And we have some boards where maybe people do have an interest in certain things. I think it does, it does impact judgment sometimes, the decision-making processes. So I know that all of us on this commission, we've tried to make sure that we keep finances, everything, very separate, very open, very public, and I think when you're on the board, it's the same standard. Furthermore, on the planning board, I know, do they have to vet their finances for the planning board? Is that something they have to do? Does anybody know?
There's no requirement for vetting--
Finances for anything, okay. So, I mean, I just think that for some of our boards, I like the way the police review board went. I like the quality and the character of the people who are on that board, but I have no problem with raising the standards for the board itself. I really appreciate the fact that you're bringing that forward.
And I actually did check out some other police advisory boards, and they do state this state chapter in their advisory boards as well, and it kind of protects us as the same--
By having that statement in there?
Correct.
Okay. But let's make sure the statement, see, you see, it's a statement that basically says, and you can rescue me, Bob, if I'm wrong, basically that a person wouldn't consistently have a vested interest in the outcomes of this board's decision. The only time that that could literally not happen unless they were involved in a case that the board was deciding on. So if they had a client in that case, I would think if it was their client, then they would naturally recuse themselves. And so the statement in and of itself, for me, is not a problem if it's the state statute. But I don't think that it should change the decisions or cause us to enter into a reason to change those that we've already approved, you know, unless I'm wrong. Do you think that that would be the case?
Your example would be accurate. The example that comes to my mind would be perhaps a person who's in the business of selling tactical equipment. They would have a vested interest on a reoccurring basis of suggesting that the police obtain more and more equipment. So that's a conflict that might come to my mind as an example. But as you say, and as Commissioner Trager points out, if there's an actual voting conflict because the vote would inure to the private benefit of that member, they have a duty to abstain from voting as well. I should also point out, regardless of whether you adopt this particular measure, you always have the ability to remove members from the board. They serve at your pleasure.
Okay, okay.
How would this be executed? How would this be put into play? Is it just the board member themselves would decide that there's a particular employment or contractual relationship that's causing a problem? Or would that be a criteria that's used to place them on the board? Would we require them to make a disclosure of all of those things? I don't understand how this would be implemented. If it's the latter, if it's the former where you say, or the latter where you say, you know, "I perceive I have a conflict, I recuse myself," and that's as everyone's saying, what we do all the time. If it's a list of all of your business obligations, I don't think any of us have done that here. I mean, we don't do that as city commissioners. We don't list our businesses and have a check done of those things. We just, on an honor system, recuse ourselves when it becomes apparent. So I don't know what the proposal is and how it would be executed. I have no problem with, you know, people continuing to recuse themselves if there's a conflict. I don't know that we're gonna, that it makes, I don't know how we would do it the other way, where people have to disclose their holdings or their relationships, and we would have to then decide if they could be appointed. I think that's more problematic. I mean, I don't think any local government does that for their positions, do they?
Uh-uh. Is--
We don't have a specific vetting process that I'm aware of. Maybe HR would correct me on that, but I'm not aware of anything other. In this case, we did do the criminal background checks, because that was a requirement for eligibility, but beyond that, nobody produces their financial records or their existing contracts with regard to conflicts.
They do the form.
I'm sorry?
Could you double-check that? The vetting process?
We do have, when anyone who's--
Oh, there is, okay.
Yeah.
There is a requirement for some committee and board members, as well as employees, they all get vetted to a degree, and if they're--
And I believe planning is one of them.
--in this, then they would not be able to--
The clerk, the clerk was actually correcting me. So there is some sort of financial disclosure.
The Form 1, the financial disclosure. The commission does that as well, as some employees and the planning board.
Right, and I believe that form, you indicate what your employment is and what property you own.
Is the language, is it pretty much the same, or how does this like change the language that we already have for this board?
For this particular board, they serve at your pleasure, so it does not add to or eliminate your ability to remove anyone from the board.
Okay, thank you.
So that portion of the statement is agreeable. I don't, as long as it doesn't compel us to take anyone off the board that's on the board, because I'm happy with those people based on, you know, what we've heard from them, so.
My question, too, is what Commissioner Delgado asked. How would we go about determining this? Would they be subject to more financial disclosure? Would they, how would we implement this?
I think it's, a state statute is more, it's just protecting us more as a city, putting the state statute in there. And so if anybody has any certain interest in a case, they should excuse themselves from there.
But that's already in the language, right, Bob? In our language that we have, currently have?
In the ordinance for the Citizens Police Review Board, it stated that the board members serve at your pleasure, so they can be removed at any time with or without cause.
So basically, if someone has that, then, but we wouldn't necessarily know it, so it's not a, you know, we didn't state it, and I think that's where she's going with that, that we want to just state that.
Do they have to disclose? So if they believe in their own conscience that there's something that could come up, they have to disclose?
If a member felt that they had this conflict, they are duty-bound to remove themselves from the board. That is state law.
Hmm.
But that is a duty of the board member. This would add some additional guidance to the commission for removal of that board member. That would be the purpose of this section, if you will.
And the second part of it is just to clarify that the board doesn't have independent investigation authority and must rely on the completed internal investigation file and receive as well, and cannot interview a city employee. And that is actually a Florida statute, Chapter 112, Part 6, as well. So it's pretty much what we have in there, but it just clarifies to our board members they are not able to interview an employee, and they must go by the report that is given to them by Internal Affairs. They can't do an outside investigation.
I think that that's already, from my perspective, that's already stated in the ordinance.
But, yes--
It's just as a redundant--
It's just a extra protection. The board's decision-making, this is the exact statute, "The board's decision-making and reporting under this section is limited to consideration of the completed Internal Affairs file. The board does not have an independent investigative authority to interview city employees or witnesses, or to obtain documents or other material, or any factual matter related to the board's review beyond the contents of the completed Internal Affairs file. The board's finding may, however, identify deficiencies in the department investigation." And that is a Florida statute, Chapter 112, Part 6.
And I should state, I'm not aware of that being verbatim language. I would have to review that section to determine that. I did not draft this based on that statute, and I have not reviewed that statute, Commissioner. Well, I mean, I drafted this language, but I did not draft it based on the statute that you're citing, too, and I'd have to see that statute to know if it's--
Right, he didn't vote on that part, but that is actually how the statute reads. Now, the one, the first part of it, that you did review that statute, correct?
Yes, the first section is verbatim from the Code of Ethics, but the second section was not lifted from Florida statutes, to my knowledge.
But the second, the second one is pretty much already in, the language is already in there.
I would have to confirm that.
No, in our city ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
No, well, it's in there, but stated another way, so that--
Correct.
Yes, the sections leading up to this proposed addition essentially say that the investigation is limited to the IA file. This additional section would add to that by saying that they cannot conduct an independent investigation.
It's limited to the IA file, and so that's why I said that it's redundant language and unnecessary. So, you know, I would support the first one. The second one I find to be not relevant to, it's just, you know, and I--
And I would caution everyone that this is first reading. Before anyone makes a final decision, you'll need to go through the public hearing process.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion, right? We have a second, so to come back, you can just, to me, add the first one and the second one. I don't, just eliminate that, because it's already there. You have any other comments or questions? Anyone else, or any other opinions or thoughts? No? Okay.
Actually, I have a question. So if the decision is to leave things the status-- So if the decision is to leave things to status quo, then do we need to bring this back on a second reading?
I'm sorry. If the decision was, you could terminate it tonight. I mean, you could vote it down tonight. It's not like a quasi-judicial hearing. But if the consensus is to move it forward, you should have public comment before you make a final vote.
I just wanted to understand that, thank you. I wasn't sure if you...
It doesn't matter to me that much. I'm just, you know, she wants to do it, and I don't have a problem with it, but if you guys aren't comfortable with it, I'm one way or the other.
I don't think it's necessary.
Nor do I.
You don't either, Commissioner?
I think it's inherent in what we've already drafted and in the rules of, you know, already. So if it's already in the statute, then I don't feel the need that we need to recite it again in here. So I would, I wouldn't, I don't see the need to change what we've already got at this point, so.
I kind of appreciate the fact that as a...
I appreciate the fact that as a general rule, we're trying to be more precise in our language as we move forward. I kind of like the idea of being accurate with what we intend to do on our various boards.
Okay. I don't care.
I would say this, if there would be a motion not to move forward on this, we should take public comment, because that would be a final decision. In order to adopt the ordinance, you would have to have the two readings and so on. But in order to kill it, we could do that tonight after public hearing.
Okay. I guess I need to hear from others, because I'm really neutral and feel as though it's not, I don't feel it's really necessary, but I'm not opposed to it if it makes someone, makes her comfortable. I don't care. The half, the second half, I think is not relevant at all, but... Do we need to take a vote, a roll-call vote?
Well, you need a motion.
Decide we need a motion. We have a motion.
They have a motion in the second.
Motion to approve.
But it would be, it would be an adjustment, from my opinion, so I couldn't vote on it to support it as is. But you guys want to weigh in? I don't know.
From my understanding and my meeting with the attorney today, it's kind of redundant language. I know we want to be precise, but being precise doesn't mean being redundant, in my opinion. I don't really see the need for it.
Okay.
I concur with my colleagues on the redundancy.
All right, so we have a motion to approve. Let's go ahead and take public comment. And if it moves forward, we'll have to have the second meeting for a formal approval. And if the motion does not pass, that'll be the end of it.
Okay. We'll have public comment there.
Can you go out and see if anyone wants to speak on this item?
Commissioner Cantu, did you say it's, Part 2 is taken from what statute? Is it the Bill of Rights?
It's Florida statute, Chapter 112-311.
311. That's the second part, right?
Yes.
He just announced it. Next in 413 North Cranberry Avenue. Actually, it is understood in the ordinance. However, it doesn't hurt to clarify, to shine a spotlight on something of this nature. And adding one single line, the first one, is not going to hurt anybody. One of your fellow colleagues brought this up. It was of concern to her, and you're not seriously looking at it, because it's only one line, and it's only clarification. It is not reinventing the wheel. It's just saying, "We want to make sure that they understand that they not have a conflict of interest." I understand your reluctance, but I also understand Stacy's view that we want to clarify, and that's all we're doing, is bringing a spotlight so that we don't have to worry about it in the future. Thank you.
All right. We'll have a motion. Have any other speakers?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Chris Ridge, Daytona Beach. Thank you, Commissioner Cantu, for bringing this up. And I must concur that I would like to see this move forward and have the language amalgamated such that it does comply with the state statutes. I've just had an opportunity to read it, and I think it's a good idea. Again, it shows that we're fully in compliance, that we're not hiding any skeletons in any closet. Provides a great deal of confidence to the citizens of the city, that we know that you're doing the right thing, and that's why I support the Commissioner Cantu's amendment. Yes, you know, we can tidy up the language a little bit, so it doesn't sound as redundant, but I think it's a very good idea to make this language very clear that we are in compliance with the state of Florida as well, which we should be. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have no other speakers for this item.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. We'll just take a roll-call vote. Who's first tonight?
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantu.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Nay.
Commissioner Reed.
Nay.
Commissioner Traeger.
Nay.
Commissioner Delgado.
Nay.
Mayor Derrick O'Henry, sorry.
Yea, yes.
Okay, so it is four, it fails three to four.
Three to four, okay. All right. That, we didn't move anything to the end of the agenda. Sheepers creepers.
While we're on this subject, I'd like to have a discussion as well. On March 3rd, as a commission, we approved the board members for the police advisory board. When we approved the appointees at that time, I was not aware or did not have enough information on a certain candidate on that board. And I assume that some of my colleagues as well didn't have this information as well. So my understanding, a certain board member has had previous litigations with the city of Daytona Beach. Having friends as attorneys, that's their job, I understand that. But later on, after I made my vote, I was aware that one of our appointees has five cases, lawsuits right now with the city of Daytona Beach. And what really concerns me is one of them is with the police department. And I believe that's a conflict of interest, to have someone on a police advisory that is actually suing the test by cases against the city of Daytona right now. So I'd like to have some discussion on that.
Well, one thing I would say is, as an attorney, you know, we are subject to pretty strict rules of conduct, and if we had an actual conflict of interest, I think that would probably be subject to a bar grievance or something as well. I know that's a concern that I've had as a city commissioner, and that's why I can't take certain cases, because there's either ethical conflicts or Florida bar conflicts. So if there's a specific case, then I think that that would be something that either Ted Dorn or John Rothstein, whoever the other attorneys are on there, would have to be, you know, concerned with. But, I mean, I know that Mr. Rothstein has sued the city. Some of his lawsuits are slip and falls, automobile accidents. But, I mean, my understanding from what you just brought up in the clarification is that they're really going to be limited to specific cases that they're investigating and the internal investigations filed in those cases. So unless they have a lawsuit on that actual case, which would be pretty obvious, they would then have a conflict, I don't necessarily think that just because someone disagrees with what, is suing someone on behalf of, is suing the city on behalf of a citizen, I don't think that that automatically makes them ineligible to serve on the board or would mean that they're not fit to otherwise discharge their duties. Obviously, if they have a client who has an internal affairs complaint, and they would be sitting on that review board, I would, that would be a clear conflict. I don't think any attorney would think otherwise, and I think they would run a risk of being grieved to the bar or having sanctions for that. But unless that's the case, I don't think it's a problem in and of itself, just because they're representing a client who has a disagreement with the city on something. That's my, that's my position. I mean, I routinely defend people who are arrested by Daytona Beach police officers. I don't feel it creates a conflict, meaning to discharge my duties up here. So I think it has to be limited to the actual facts of their case and the facts of the litigation. And obviously, as you pointed out, if, you know, they're going to be given a very limited role in what they can and can't do, I can't imagine it really would be a problem.
Yeah. Commissioner, I'm not trying to be rude or combative, but I do think we need to take these positions more serious. I find it's a conflict of interest when we have someone we appointed to the board that is suing the city and has actually five cases against the city. That money is coming out of the taxpayers' money.
They got a right to sue.
Not ours. So I, I mean, like I said, I'm not trying to be combative. I just don't believe that we should have someone on a board that has five active cases, and one is actually with the police department. And I feel, as well, I should have been aware of this before I made a vote, and I do not know why I was not aware of this, because my understanding that he had lawsuits, litigations with the city, and I understood that if he did have prior lawsuits, because that's what an attorney does. That's how they make a living. But to put someone on a board that has five active lawsuits, I think that's a conflict of interest for the city of Daytona Beach.
Well, first of all, even if he has five, only one concerns the police. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So he can easily recuse himself from that case.
I still don't think it's proper, and it's a conflict of interest if you're suing the city of Daytona Beach and then serving on a board. I mean, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah. What makes a horse race?
Well, if you're speaking of John Rothstein, I'm the one who proposed John Rothstein. You know, I did take that seriously. I've known John Rothstein for a long time. And frankly, I think someone who's critical of the city is perfectly qualified to be someone who sits in judgment of whether we're doing a good job or not. I don't want someone who would just rubber stamp it, and I know that John would vote his conscience and just do what he thinks is right, regardless of the pressure for or against him in any situation. And, you know, John takes cases that are unpopular, and he represents a segment of the population that otherwise wouldn't have access to court. So, you know, I didn't take that, I was aware that he had sued the city. Actually, I don't think it disqualifies someone from serving the city just because they're critical of the city, or in fact, they represent a client who is critical of the city or has a conflict with the city. It's not their conflict, it's their client's conflict. So I don't necessarily agree with that proposition. I don't think it disqualifies him. But if the rest of the commission feels that it's a problem, I mean, we can deal with it.
And I know you mentioned the Florida bar. I actually did call the Florida bar, just to ask them to make sure that I was understanding correctly if it would be a conflict of interest. And they actually told me they believe it could be a conflict of interest, not just for the city, as well as whoever his client is as well. So that's just my personal opinion. I just don't feel like I would want someone on the board that's actually suing the city. And Mr. Jagger, I'm not exactly sure with the cases with the police. Could you, are you able to?
Yeah, I can give you the basics of the lawsuit.
I mean, I do have all the case numbers.
Right. So I believe the four cases are trip and fall type suits, and the fifth case that involves the police department is a false arrest case.
Okay. I've just given my opinion, and like I said, I feel like I should have knew this information and had this information before, actually, I believe my colleagues should have had this information before we settled on someone. Because I went back and listened to the tape afterwards, when he was speaking to us, he never mentioned once that he had an active lawsuit with the city. Because I'm like, did I miss something? But not once. He did say he had prior litigations with the city, but never once did he tell me, tell us up here that he had active lawsuits. And I do find it's a conflict of interest, and, I mean, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but...
Does anyone else ever want to opine on this issue?
I feel he could always recuse himself when that case came up. No big deal.
And I agree with you. He could do that, but the problem I'm saying, he actually has lawsuits with the city. Why would we, as commissioners, put some on a board, put someone on a board that has active lawsuits?
Well, it actually only comes down to one.
Well, actually, he has five. One is with the police, but he's actually suing the city.
Well, that's his job.
And I just feel like we should have had more information before we voted, because there's no way I would have voted for it.
Mm-hmm.
I think basically, there's only one case in conflict, that would be with the police department. The other ones are not with the police department.
So, no disrespect, Mr. Mayor. I believe that we should be able somehow, I don't know how we can do it, but take another vote on that. Appointee, or, I'm not sure, Mr. Jagger, you can tell us how we could do something like that? Because we should have had all information before we voted, and I know my colleagues, I'm sure, did not have all this information as well.
The way in which you'd accomplish that would be a motion to remove Mr. Rothstein from the board, to be seconded, public comment, and then a vote by the commission, of course.
Can't rescind and go back on our vote?
No, you wouldn't rescind it at this point. You would just move to remove him from the board.
Yeah, I'm not...
I'm sorry, but I have a problem with this. To a degree, I agree with you, and I don't know how the chief stands on this, but we made a decision, and I think we knew that this gentleman had sued the police, or the city before. So suing the city, period, we knew that, whether it was the police department or whomever it was, we knew that he had done that. And I think as a professional, just as Commissioner Attorney Delgado has stated, that this man has a commitment to the state bar, to be of good character when it comes to representing himself in any regard. I also believe, as it was stated by the manager, by the attorney earlier, that if we were to find that we were displeased with him, we can remove him from the board. We haven't even given him an opportunity. And again, if you, if you have everybody around the table, this comes diversity, inclusion, whatever, think in the same way, then we don't have that diversity in thought when it comes to making a decision. And this gentleman has executed his right as an attorney to sue. He's seen cases before. I think he's going to bring some experience to the board. Now, if he does not uphold his, his, his end of the bargain in regards to being a respectable citizen on this board, then we have the right to remove him. But we just put him on the board. Now, if you want to blame staff for not giving us everything, that's something totally different. But I'm not prepared to take someone off of a board that we just made a decision on. We need to be prepared to stand by our word. If we thought, we should have vetted them more ourselves. We should have asked more questions ourselves. And then we come back and say, now, we want to take him off, because now I found out more information. You should have found out more information in the beginning, all the other research that's being done on other issues. I think it's not fair to him. I don't think it's fair.
I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Daytona Beach.
And we've heard, we've heard you three times.
I know I didn't do my due diligence as well, but I do not feel it's fair to the citizens of Daytona Beach that we are putting someone on the board that is actually suing the city of Daytona Beach. Where does that money come from when he sues the city? It's not coming out of our personal pockets, it's actually coming out of the citizens. And I just feel like, and, I mean, we should have had more, more information before we put someone on that is actually, I mean, I knew, I was told that he did have prior lawsuits, and I understand that with attorneys. That's their job. That's what they do. But to find out later that there's five active lawsuits, I mean, I just, I just can't wrap my head around that one.
We've heard you, Commissioner Cantu. I understand.
Let me ask you a question. So he had, he sued the city in the past. He's suing the city now. He's on the board. If he were to sue the city in the future, would that have changed your opinion and your thought that he would have to, he shouldn't be on the board?
No. What I think now, with him having five lawsuits and one is actually with the police department, it's a conflict of interest. So being on the board and with some of the state statutes, I wouldn't think he would, he wouldn't be able to, and that's one reason I wanted that language in there, the state statute, so he wouldn't be able to actually sue the city and be with the police, sue the police or whatever you want to say, and be on the citizen board. It's a conflict of interest. He did bring up the Florida bar. I did call the Florida bar, and I did talk to them, and they actually sent me the paperwork. They said they couldn't give me all, everything, you know, by just talking to me on the phone, but they could see a conflict of interest, not just with the city, but as well with any of his clients. of his clients.
It's a conflict of interest based on, I mean, let me opine for just a second. To sue a municipality is not a crime.
No.
There's nothing illegal or unethical or wrong with that. To be an attorney is not a crime. So if that's not a crime, then I don't see how doing that is a conflict of interest in something that's not relevant to the duties that he's discharging at a given time as a member of this board. The only job that he has is to review decisions that have already been made by our police department and the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. In conjunction with six or seven other people, his job is to decide whether what they've decided, whether they made a good decision. Now, if that is not related to that decision, if of all of those suits are not related to that file that he's given, then there is no conflict, because these two things are separate. What I do over here is what I do over here when I'm suing the city six times in six cases that have nothing to do with this file. But if it has something to do with this file, then it becomes a conflict. So I don't see how this is a conflict. And let me close with this thought. The most important role that any person can have in any democracy is not to be a teacher, it's not to be a nurse, it's not to be a policeman, it's not to be a firefighter. It is to be a citizen, and a good citizen at that. So, and in my opinion, the highest and greatest duty that we all have is the duty of serving on juries in a democracy. So take that, you serve on a jury in a democracy because you can take someone's freedom away. Well, a portion of being a good citizen is to be able to serve and to make decisions that are free of bias and free of influence. Because I serve as a lawyer in my private life, should not preclude me from participating on a board that makes a decision that has nothing to do with this other stuff. And if it has something to do with that other stuff, a part of my citizenship says that these two now have a problem, I'm going to recuse myself, just like we do up here, just like we have to do. And so this person is held to a similar standard. So, and I understand that you didn't have the information. I wish you could somehow take your vote back and get off the ship. But unfortunately, unless we agree to do that, and I don't see anyone agreeing to vote to take this guy off based on that. And so I respect that you didn't know that he had these suits. Because I know a lot of people who feel as though lawyers shouldn't sue the city, or as if they shouldn't make money off of, that's a part of our society, and, you know, we need lawyers. We have a good one here that I appreciate. And so, and there's a lot of people who probably appreciate Mr. Rothstein and his private work. And because of that, and because of his presentation to us, I trust him at this particular moment to be able to make a fair decision as it relates to this review board. And I'm not going to change that. And because I'm not going to change that, I'm not going to change my vote. But I wish for you that there was a way that you could do that. But I don't see that unless other members are willing to take him off.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Those are platitudes, not reality. That's a political search, not looking out for the taxpayers. It's a conflict of interest. He is suing the city. We are not paying, the taxpayers are paying. I mean, I've heard everyone's decision, but this is exactly how I feel. When you have someone that actually has five cases and one is with the police officer, I do find that a conflict of interest, and I'm going to stand by that.
So, you know, after our last meeting, I had to take a step back, and I thought to myself, we really picked some people who had fantastic backgrounds. I was really impressed with it. And then I also had to take a look at the other side. And the other side was, as I left, was I thought to myself, you know, I really, really wanted somebody out there who was a little bit of, I'm going to say it, an activist. I was like, I wanted somebody to be on the board also that was going to say no. We sometimes need a person who just says, I don't believe in this, I think we have to look at it differently. So I actually am quite fine with Mr. Rothstein. I appreciate the language change, the precision. I like clean language, and I value language, so I appreciate that. But I have no problems with Mr. Rothstein. I don't, it's very hard to separate what you know in your mind and your training to separate that and say, I'm not going to be that person. I want him to bring some of that discerning nature to this. And I want him to ask, is this the best way? Is this the right way? Can we do it different? Based on my experience, I've seen A, B, C, D. Because right now in our board, we have a fantastic board, I'm missing that voice. But I need that voice to be there also. So from that perspective, I have no problem with Mr. Rothstein being there.
Okay. All right, well, we have no furtherance of this argument, and so platitudes are closed at this time. Okay, we'll move on to comments and inquiries from the City Commission. Commence with Commissioner May.
So, again, just to piggyback off the board situation, I really appreciate the fact that we're taking a look at our boards, and we're being discerning with our boards, and we're saying we want, just to be careful in how we process our boards, and that we're looking for accurate information. What I don't agree with is that I am not a private investigator. My job is not Google search. This is not what I want to do. You know, I don't want to have to hire my own private investigator to research everything. I trust staff to give me accurate information. That's what I ask for, and I believe that's what I get. So, what is this? Talking about buckies here. So today, Windsor Malee, they had vaccinations. I'm happy to say that 90 residents were vaccinated. I was there, very happy with the turnout. Residents are extremely happy. I will also add to that, at Central Baptist, also in Zone 3, as is Windsor Malee, they are also producing vaccinations, and also have been in contact with Westminster, also in Zone 3. I've got three senior communities right in this area, and they are also on the list for vaccinations. So the seniors in Zone 3 are doing well, and they're quite happy with it. I will tell you that I have a question for you with regard to Bike Week. This has come up a number of times. I would like to know, how does the commission feel about a review of the Bike Week plans, the master plans? How do we feel about a review? Do we think it's time yet? I've been on commission for two, going on three years now, and we've discussed this almost every year. And I'd like to know, when was the last review that we had? Because times change, needs change, situations change, COVID changed us, right? I had some positive comments, some negative comments about the event. From what I've heard, we had many people in town. From what I've heard, the economic flow also expanded into South Daytona, Daytona Beach shores, and throughout Volusia County. So my question is, is it time yet for a Bike Week review? Because I have a feeling it's come up before. Any thoughts on that? Yes? And so could we please schedule that? And what, because again, we've had these conversations before, so can we schedule it? And I'd like us to, I'm going to just come out and say it. I would like for us to try to get this done sooner rather than later, because the Bike Toba Fest is coming up. And I don't like problems, none of us do. We don't like residents who are trying to do business coming up and saying, look, I'm running into roadblocks. If we can clean up the language, I think this would be now the time to do this. So when can we plan for that? And what's involved in that? What do we have to do for that? I've not been involved in that before. Mr. Mayor, what's involved?
It's a, Jim, you want to opine on that, what's involved in the review?
Well, the review, we would have to go back through the, you know, how it was adopted, and the content of what was put together. And then the process itself is a unique process that was developed by the city. As you know, the chamber, actually, they review the applications, they provide recommendations to the City Commission, and then when it gets to the City Commission, we ask questions, or you ask questions about each of the applicants that want to participate in that program. So that process was, because the chamber really, it's a money-making opportunity for them, they agreed to be the voter, vetting the applications and bringing them back to us. So that's kind of how it flows. Once we get it, we act on it, and from the chamber, and then any adverse action that comes up should get appealed to an appeal process. Is it court, Bob?
I believe it goes to the special magistrate.
Special magistrate? And then, we have had some come back to us, but the process was developed this way so that we didn't get tied up in a long meetings with, you know, with the applicants for each applicant during that process. It was to expedite that, basically, the process is approved.
I guess.
So the review that you would do would be a review of the actual authorizations you're giving them to participate in, and those conditions that would be established.
So I guess part of my issue is, is possibly, I'm not sure if Captain Lee wants to address this, but I mean, I can just tell you from my experience. You know, I don't like creating undue work for the employees of the city, because I find that they work really, really hard and diligently. And when things come up that possibly could have been addressed at an earlier time, in an earlier process, then at the 11th hour, it's brought to the city, and then it falls to us to fix an issue at a really poor time. Things like that disturb me, because then I am disrupting the business function of a businessperson, the city employee, the city staff, the police force. Everybody now gets involved. And then I get phone calls. And so if we could somehow figure out a way to get as much information completed from the chamber, who I adore and I work well with, all right? If we could just figure out a way that all those little boxes could be checked, and when people come to the city, or when they come to the city to get their permitting, whatever, it's a done, finished deal, as opposed to little bits and pieces. Because so far, we've had a number of people come to commission requesting things that could have maybe been addressed in a better process. So that's my thought on it.
In reality, Commissioner, those that we got this year that came in late, we had a lot of unusual occurrences of people either changing property or whatever, coming in late. They didn't get through, they didn't go through the vetting process. And in all reality, what we should have done is, is, look, you missed it. You can come back next year when it comes in. But we actually worked with those applicants to get them in the process, and that's more of trying to make everything successful. I don't think it was trying to burden anyone, it was really trying to be sure that our process was not only fair, but we gave some an opportunity that we didn't have to.
And I agree with you. So last year, just as an example, we had people come up discussing paved and unpaved parking lots. And the paved and unpaved parking lots took one or two sessions to actually have that conversation, right? There were people who said that they had been in the master plan, they weren't in the master plan, they'd been overlooked from the master plan. All of these little details, and I'm just wondering, again, I feel as though we're talking ourselves out of a review. But if it's just a matter of just cleaning it up...
You were talking us out of...
I don't believe I am, no. It sounds like I was for a minute there, but I'm not. Because listening to you there for a minute, I thought you were saying, well, everything is okay. But again, if you, if we, I feel it's time. It's been how many years now since you've had it looked at?
Oh, a long time.
About five, 10, 15, 20? About 20? Yeah, it's about time.
Twenty years, but...
15, then?
No, probably about seven years, eight years, something like that. I don't know exactly when we actually did it, but it was right after I got here under there.
Okay. So what are your thoughts? But again, we've had this conversation before at commission, and we haven't done anything.
I think we concur with you that it's time to do that. I don't think...
Excellent, good, good.
That's why I said, I thought you were talking us out of...
Oh, no, I'm not. I'm not at all. It's a symbolism, I got worried there for a minute. Don't like being worried. Okay, so I'm just wondering when we can schedule that? And then also Friday, I'd like to invite us all to something. So I believe Commissioner Delgado and I share concerns on Seabreeze, as does the mayor. And they're having an event at the Plaza Resort Hotel from 5:00 to 7:00. I'm hoping that as many people come as possible, and I'm hoping that, you know, you'll give feedback and concerns and ways to help that entire beachside area. It's not just about Seabreeze, it's about that entire peninsula and what we can do to improve it. So that will be starting at 5:00 and going until 7:00 at the Plaza Resort and Spa. And that is it for me. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner?
I don't really have that much. I just actually want to say thank you to Mr. Morris and Andy Holmes for drawing out those maps for Bayberry residents. I mean, that was some time-consuming, and they are very thankful for that. And actually, I do want to discuss one thing. If maybe, I know our state of emergency, if we could start letting the public back in, maybe like most of the municipalities, they have two seats roped off. I mean, it's time. I mean, the state's open, all restaurants open 100%. If they could start coming back in. I mean, I'm not saying like a packed house, maybe, I'm not sure how you would want to do it, Mayor, but, I mean, so many ends, I mean...
That's not a decision just for me, although I have thought about that and have some thoughts about other things, opening things up. So I'm not averse to some plan that the staff could bring us to say we would allow this many people in, or something that is physically distancing here in the near future. I'm not sure of the data, just continue to look at the numbers, but I do think it is okay to start considering that. But I don't know what others think. They may just still be opposed to it. I don't have...
Right now, I will tell you that I recognize that you're not wearing a mask, and that you feel safe with Plexi. I don't feel that way. And I'm in contact with seniors every single day who are choosing not to take the vaccine because of their health. So if that is your decision to not wear a mask...
That's my decision.
Then that's your decision.
And actually, I have autoimmune disease, lupus.
Which is fine.
And so I am a very high-risk patient. And I think my medical decisions and my feelings should be my personal...
Exactly. And so putting me, for me personally, I represent a group of people who I'm in contact with daily, and I cannot do that to people who depend on me and my sense of their safety, because I am responsible for them. So if that is the decision of the commission, then I am more than happy to attend meetings. I'll be in the building, but I'll be completely separate. I will not subject myself to that. I don't do that in my personal life, don't do it in my public life, I just don't do it. And I want, case in point, we have both been at events. I walked into a room, I sat at the back, I was one of three people wearing a mask of about 100 people. One of three. And so was my guest. And I did not take it off.
I understand. No disrespect, and I was at that meeting with over 100 people, and you did stay that whole time.
And I did, and I stayed that way, even when I spoke. So it's a very consistent way of being for me.
But we are the only municipality in Volusia County that is not allowing the public, and I mean, but that's everyone's decision. I mean, everybody has their own feelings, I mean, what goes on.
Well, I mean, I was on a television show the other day, and I was sort of, it was Good Morning America, and they were kind of trying to go in on us for having Bike Week. And my feeling is that we've been the most COVID-responsible community in Volusia County. And so that's not something that I feel that we have to change. And so I don't think the others want to do it. I'm not, I do feel that it's personally time to let some people in, a few, but if the commission continues, I'm more on the side of continuing to be safe. And that's the message I want to continue. And I'm also more on the side of trying to figure out how we can increase the number of people who are willing to get vaccinated. And that's really what's most important to me, is how we can encourage people to help. Because, you know, we're not out of the woods with this, but I respect where you are. Does anyone else wish to join in that thought, or are you all still at the same place?
Same place.
Same place. Same place.
I'd rather be safe than sorry. We have to wait another month before we do that, fine. Because I'm waiting on two weeks or three weeks after Bike Week now to see what happens.
Okay. All right. Now, I respect that.
Good.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Henry?
No comments tonight.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, you all, I have to follow up on an email and a conversation I had with Reverend Thomas on the Butts Drive. His church, from a national perspective, has been vetted by the Biden campaign to do COVID-19 vaccines. However, he does not have a facility and annex to his church. And he was asking, could they use the Dickerson Center? And I've shared this with the mayor, but I said I would come back with more information because he had to go back and say, we had said yes. So I need to know where they stand with this and I, I hope to share some information with you to be able to bring that to that community.
You shared it with the manager?
Yes, that, that they had asked me for this, but we could not move forward on anything until he came back from his body to say that, you know, how do we move? And they said they would supply everything from the nurses, they would sanitize the building, they didn't need our staff to sanitize, they, they just needed a facility and they would do everything.
Well, whatever we can do to make that happen has been my perspective 100%.
Yes.
Any and all vaccines that we can support, let's get that done.
All right. So I will follow up with Reverend Thompson to find out what his, he had to go back to his bishop, I believe, to say that our municipality said yes, we would let them use the facility. So I need to find out where they are with that. Also, Mr. Mayor, thank you for acknowledging the banner project. Commissioner Can too was there to recognize the historical banners. We had some family members there. Mother Cherry came out. And we took pictures with her. We also had Mr. Collins, his daughter, came out. Mrs. Chair was accompanied by her daughter Cassandra and she was very proud and, and excited about what was taking place. Then I want to also acknowledge that the manager and staff have acknowledged Theodore Ted Wolf. I brought to their attention that he had saved a citizen's life they found slumped over their, their steering wheel. And he had just taken a CPR class and it came in good hands. He was able to save that gentleman's life. So it's, he's recognized in the manager's update today. You'll see that. Then it's, you know, we talk about COVID-19 and, you know, on Saturday, we will, we will bury another who has succumbed to that. And that's Mrs. Helen Bronson, wife of our past president, Dr. Oswald Perry Bronson, my president when I was in college. And I'd also just like to say, let's pray for Bethel Cookman University. We're losing our current president, Dr. Kright. And let's pray for the alumni to stand and not to allow the discord and the disrespect that took place from the previous administration to happen again. We will stand and we will support and we will defend our institution and Mother Mary. That concludes my comments.
All right, yes. Commissioner Traeger?
I just want to say, saw in the newspaper, it's the 75th anniversary of Jackie Robinson playing in Daytona Beach. Can't believe it's been 75 years, but, and I also wanted to say congratulations to all the Irish, because it's the St. Patrick's Day and those of us who are Irish for one day, St. Patrick's Day. And I noticed the green around.
I'm sorry, I don't have any. Got his drink. Commissioner?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
I have quite a bit tonight, so I'm sorry, but not really sorry. Number one, while I do think we should continue to be COVID-conscious and responsible, I, I think that staff, and this is, you guys would have to concur, we have swimming, which I proudly signed my children up for. We have gymnastics, but I think that we should have other sports and events for our children. There is growing frustration in the community as we have to remember, I had a kid who came back to school and I saw him and he was there last year and of course, children grow up. But he looked like he weighed at least 40 or 50 pounds more than he weighed last year. And that's not to knock him, but our children are under a mental health threat also. And there's a balancing act that has to take place with COVID between physical health and mental health. And we, I think if anyone warrants us beginning and to move back down that road, I think it's our children. So I would like, if it's agreeable with you all, for staff to begin considering soccer, baseball, and even basketball in the summer. Basketball might be able to run a summer season. And if you believe it most conducive, we have four courts at Derbyshire, two at Midtown, you know, and, you know, so you could do it outside. And if you chose to do it inside, which I'm not opposed to because they're, they're doing them in schools inside, we could limit the number of people who come in and say, only your parents or immediate family, no one else could come in. But I think we should allow the staff to do their homework and pay attention to the CDC guidelines and then move forward. Is that agreeable with this body? Okay. That's, so that's one. I would like for you all to make certain that you are reviewing linkage fees, which is an issue as it relates to affordable housing and all of the issues that Bob gave us, no, the other Bob, as it relates to affordable housing. And there, there were many. So I want us to continue to, to look at those and review those because the consultant is continuing to work. And so I would like staff to bring us an update on where he is and when we can expect him to come back and give us a report on what his findings are. And I don't want us to be behind as it relates to our studying and our knowledge that we were given on December 9th to empower us to make, you know, informed decisions and be prepared to move the city forward down this most important issue. Another issue as it relates to the new COVID cares funds, let us begin to look at if it's possible for us to use some of those funds that are coming before us for affordable housing as it relates to COVID and, and also for homelessness. And I, I've read in what was sent to us this week that part of those funds can be used. So I would like staff to begin going through that to make certain that how can we use it to help us advance these important issues in our city? Were you want, did you have something to address on some of that?
I have a question with regard to the housing. I think Commissioner Can too brought up a few weeks ago about whether or not we were going to still have the Builders Association be involved with a meeting of some sort. They wanted to have input, maybe some of the development people wanted to have some input as a group in a group kind of think tank and provide some insight. Is that something that you foresee happening following the consultant's information, before the consultant's information? Because I would like to see what they're thinking because right now lumber costs are going up. And so we're in lumber costs, lots of things are going up right now in the construction industry. So all of these, these things are going to factor into how quickly housing can happen, how quickly we have new, new units on the market, now how much it's going to cost the first-time home buyer. The longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. I recognize we're working on some initiatives to keep that low, but there's some downsides to that also. So the question is, when would you like to have that meeting?
With that, with that group?
With that group, for their input, for their input. The builders, the ones you brought up a few weeks ago? My mistake then, so I'll bring it up. So then the Builders Union, the Building and Construction, the Volusia Flagler County Builders Association, they had asked to weigh in on it. And so I'm wondering when they can do that.
If they want to meet with staff, I think they should begin that immediately.
Okay.
And begin doing that. And then I'm agreeable to meet and to hear if they have a plan or thought about what they believe is reasonable. They should begin engaging in that now because I don't intend to, to, to slow down.
Sure.
But I want to hear from them and I want to, you know, respect their positions.
I will contact them and with whom should they correspond?
The manager.
With Mr., okay, fantastic. I'll reach out to them. Thank you so much.
And then I'd be happy for them to reach out to me so they can, you know, let me know what, what their thinking is because I didn't mean to go, go this alone for us as a city. But as I said before, you know, we, we were stale and it's time to move forward. But I saw, I want to hear from them and I'm, I want a partner.
Thank you.
Okay. And so that's linkage fees. I am, I've pulled together a group of people, maybe 10, 11 people who are beachside merchants, beachside residents and hotel owners. And I'm going to meet with this group virtually and for, and this is just me, this is not a, just to meet with them and have conversation about our beachside and things that we can do to make it a better space for our community. My plan is to do that over the course of the next year or so. It's a part of my continued effort to reach out to portions of our community, to hear from them and to have information that we can, I can bring back to this body and say, these are things that may be low-hanging fruit that we may be able to engage in to move this community forward. And that's as it relates to beachside and they cover residents from the whole peninsula, Main Street and Seabreeze and all, all areas. And so I just wanted you all to know that I will be meeting with this group and I will be bringing back information just for your knowledge and for us to, things for us to consider as we move forward in our effort to make our city a place where residents from all across the city are being heard from and help us to make good decisions about how we can make the beach, which I believe is still our greatest resource, a more valuable asset in our community.
Are we allowed to be involved in that? Are we allowed to listen to it or is it something only for you?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so.
We'd run into sunshine issues.
We run into sunshine issues. And so, and I'm not discouraging you from doing the same, but it's just because of sunshine, we don't want to, can't do it. And this is just a group for me to meet with and, and get my feelings from, but I'll bring them back to you. And then you'd be welcome to talk to anyone that's, that's working, but I, I don't want to get into sunshine.
Of course, you'd notice it as a public meeting, you know, that's up to you, but to avoid sunshine issues, you'd have to notice it as a public meeting.
Yeah, and I don't want to do that. I mean, it's not, I want this group to be able to work in, in there and give their opinions and talk and opine, you know, so. And the next thing is, and this is something that I think is, that we all have to consider, but we're subject to a lot of criticism here and a lot of issues in Daytona Beach. We are the only city in Volusia County that has the last call for alcohol to exceed the 2:00 o'clock limit. Ours, I think, is 3:00. And there is no doubt that we have the most crime in Volusia County. And there is no doubt that we have the most violent crime in the wee hours of the morning. And this is something that has been brought before this community in the past and we rejected it before. But I would, if you all agree, that the commission, I mean, that city manager and his staff would bring us something to consider changing that, that we would be congruent with the rest of Volusia County. I mean, we have, we pay the most money in Volusia County for police. We pay the most money in Volusia County for fire and it's not even close. And I don't want to ram this down our throats, give everybody plenty of time to think about it. And you will hear from people who don't want us to change that. And that's, you know, and it's a major hotbed topic that will, that will have people show up, knock on your door and email you. And so you'd have, it'd be a tough decision politically for some of us to make. But I believe it's one that I'm prepared to consider. And if you all are agreeable, I'd like our manager and staff to bring us the resources to show how we can be congruent with the rest of the county. And then if we decide not to do it, we decide not to do it.
I, I just don't understand what an hour makes the difference. What, what are they going to do with an hour?
That's the whole, that's the whole, that's, that's part of the argument that they're going to make.
I'm just asking, I'm, I'm not out there drinking every night or anything, but I'm just curious what an hour does. I know I've lived here 43 years, it's been a 3:00, I mean, ever since I remember. And actually, I remember the drinking age used to be 18, actually, before 21.
And that's, that's exactly what people are going to say.
Right. So I'm just asking.
You asking me?
Yeah, they're going to ask me what an hour, what, what's the difference in an hour?
Well, well, think about it. It's an hour. So it's an hour that, 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 that everyone else, every other tap is closed. You know, every other one is closed. Ours is open. So the people who are, who need that or who want that, they leave all those other places and they come into our city to get their last fill. And so it's, that's really what it is.
Right. And the businesses make a little bit more money.
And the businesses make a little bit more money. Our businesses make a little bit more money.
I mean, how many poor crime statistics to find out if that last hour is like a lot more crime than, I mean.
We don't have, we really don't have to pull crime statistics, but we should.
Right.
But when you look at our overall crime statistics, they tell the story as opposed to other communities. And so for me, it really is, it does have a lot to do with crime.
And I, I'm just curious because I know if we do this, I'm going to, just like you said, we're going to get a lot of calls and I want, those will be one of the questions that will be asked.
Yeah, and we're going to be asked. And I, and, but I'm asking if you all are okay with hearing that because it is a tough issue for our community and we're going to be inundated with that and, and you know, so if you all, are you okay with hearing? And then deciding whether we want to repeal that and not be the only one open until 3:00 AM?
You're going to provide us with some information with regard to, because I would like to hear from the police or see, do we have an increase in crime from 12:00 to 4:00, I would say? I think 4:00 would be the magic hour where crime takes place in the community. I want to know if there's a difference. It's an increase in speed, traffic accidents, break-ins, violence in certain, in the corridors that we're trying to clean up, meaning Seabreeze areas, you know, the beachside areas, going toward a family-friendly environment, et cetera. I want, I want to know what the numbers say. That's what I'd be curious about.
Okay. I don't have those numbers and if you all are asking that of staff, I do know that many years ago, a police chief who was here did a study, and I don't, I can't recall who it was, I'll see if we can get his, get the name of that chief to be able to pull the information that they had. They did a presentation and I was told of that, but.
Yeah, and I would like, I would be curious with that, I guess that would actually refer to our hotels, the motels, the bars as well, right? And we are tourist town, so.
Well, we are tourist town, we are. But it, we, we in part determine what type of tourists we attract. Okay. That is, that is not the last issue. The last issue is, and this is for your consideration, about how many years ago, the last time we did a charter review, the residents were given an option and they voted to approve a city auditor. The, and it gives, and I'll read this to you all. Section 31, City Auditor, Initial Appointment and Annual Evaluation. That's not the right one. And I would like for the city attorney to share these two documents with you all. And basically, it empowered. and basically, it empowers us to hire an auditor. And we're getting ready for a new manager. And this is a best practice that's used by other municipalities. The county recently did the same. Uh, they recently hired their own internal auditor that reports to the staff, but I'm going to read it. "The city commission may appoint a city auditor who shall serve at the pleasure of the commission and who shall be charged with conducting financial, fiscal, compliance, financial, procedure, legal and administrative audits of all city departments, offices, agencies and programs. The city auditor shall act as the head of the internal audit department and shall be responsible for administration of the department, including the appointment, supervision and removal of all personal, personnel employed in the department. The compensation of the city auditor shall be fixed by the commission in sums commensurate with the duties imposed." And I won't bore you with the rest of the reading, other than to say that they shall be a certified public accountant and shall have been a practicing CPA for at least five years. This person will report directly to the city commission. And there are other issues as it relates to this. So I asked the, uh, city attorney, share this with you all. You then review this material. Then we have a discussion at our next council meeting to see if this is something that we want to now, um, do as a commission. It is, as I repeat, considered, uh, when I was at the National Mayor's Conference, I went to a session on this, but it is considered a, uh, best practice for municipalities across the state. So if you guys would come back, have this as a discussion item for us, uh, at the next meeting, because I, if we decide to do this, staff is going to then have to take us through a process similar to what we just went through or what we're going through with hiring a manager. Um, and, um, I think it's appropriate if we're doing this moving forward. It will help us with oversight of the city.
I don't think it's a bad idea and I do remember when the county was doing it and I was watching the process as it was going on.
I like it.
I do agree.
Even as a local sorority, we have an internal auditor and every year we have to have an external auditor based on how much funds we've raised. Someone has to look at our books. Now, we had an auditor before. He didn't report to the commission, but it was Bob. His office was right across from mine when I first got hired. So did we eliminate the position and didn't refill it?
Well, that wasn't an auditor. It was a budget person.
He was a budget auditor. He was a budget person.
He was a budget person.
And he did auditing too.
And he did auditing for us.
But yeah, I like this.
But this person does this for us.
I like this.
This is different and it's different and it's, and you know, I'll just be honest with you, you know, I feel that we're in a great, a, a far better financial space than we've ever been in. And I, uh, attribute a lot of that, uh, to having a manager who I have, uh, had a lot of confidence in overseeing departments. Doesn't mean that we're trying to, we're going to get a new manager that we don't have confidence in. But no matter who they are, they will not have been here 15 years. They will not know the departments. Uh, and, um, what happens in this city will ultimately falls back on us. And the more information we can have, I, I believe is better. But at the end of the day, it's a decision that we have to make. It is a big, it's a big deal. Because essentially, we're adding another person that reports directly to us. And it, you know, changes a lot of, uh, you know, it doesn't change a lot, but it gives them the opportunity to look at things that cities may not often do. So, uh, if you guys will bring it back as a, an, um, issue and then you can share that with them. Um, and, uh, the final thing, um, is as, as it relates to, um, all of those other issues, I would like to, and this really doesn't pertain to you all, but I, I want to say that I am concerned about, um, the children in our city who have lost, um, a lot of time in classrooms. And as you all know, last year or two years ago, we changed from giving out the mayor's backpack giveaway to the mayor's, um, literacy initiative. And so, uh, I'm going to begin work in, to begin preparing to kick that back off. You know, it, it has to take a new sort of a shape, but, uh, I do, we do want to start that again in some fashion. I'm not sure exactly how to do it, but, uh, over the summer, um, I'd like to do something that helps our students to go back to school a little bit stronger and a little bit better in both math and reading. So I just wanted you all to be aware that I'll be getting with the manager and Ms. Goodman probably to, uh, to begin, uh, something along those lines. And I know that was a lot, but, uh, that's it for me. Um, Buckets, oh, uh, hope you can attend this event. We need account of elected officials, staff that will be attending. Please call or text me. I'll be there. So I don't know about the rest of you, but I'll be there. I'm excited to have some of the beef jerky that they sell among a few other things.
I had the privilege, I did a private tour, I think it was last week or something, and took some pictures. You might have seen them there, but it was incredible.
Yeah, I'm excited.
And I believe they hired approximately 300 employees as well. And it was up $15, I think, up to $28 through we, three weeks, full 1K.
That's right. It's the benefits.
It was, it was benefits.
Very happy with them. Yeah.
And known for their bathrooms.
And every-
Actually, the women's bathroom, I think, had 25 stalls.
Wow. And everyone, uh, that works for them gets healthcare.
Correct.
Everyone.
Healthcare.
Healthcare benefits. So it's, it's really, really great, great company to become into our community. All right. That concludes our meeting unless, uh, oh, hold it. We need one thing from our city attorney.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to remind the commission that the candidates forum for the city manager to be held on Saturday is a meeting for the public. It's in order to provide them information on the candidates and, and to, um, uh, hear them speak. It is not a public meeting for this city commission. Um, the case law on that topic would indicate that the, the format with the breakout rooms is really not conducive to the openness requirement for your city commission meetings. And so I would recommend strongly, uh, that the commission members not attend either remotely or in person in order to ensure that there's no question in terms of our compliance with the sunshine law.
But we can watch it on TV.
You can watch it. I think there is a live segment. Obviously, they can't show live each of the breakout rooms. Uh, but there's no prohibition against, uh, watching or educating yourself in that way.
They will be online after, after we have those events. Each session will be online, so you'll be able to see it.
I'm very excited and appreciative of that and thank, thanks to Mr. Bone and her team and Ms. Goodman and anyone who I might have forgotten who's worked hard to try to help us to, to do that in a good way.
Mr. Jagger, we can watch it, but no questions. Correct?
Right. Do not participate virtually and of course, uh, I would not recommend you attend in person.
All right. Anything else? Nothing else for the good? This meeting is adjourned? All right, Kim, first speaker.
Okay, we're going to open up our public comment forum. Our first speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is John Nicholson.
Yeah.
Goodness, Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak. Um, and thank you for bringing up the fact that it's time for us to utilize some of these more comfortable chairs. For those of us of, uh, senior age, sitting on those metal chairs is not easy task. We have to sit there for hours at a time. So I would appreciate you taking that a little more serious. Obviously, the, uh, city has done a great deal towards COVID, but you don't cover the microphones, has done things like the TPO meeting and the other places where they put protective, uh, screens over the microphones and you're not wiping down the podium. So yeah, we're missing a few bases. That said, I hope to get my, uh, shot this, uh, weekend if everything goes well. Um, I, once again, oh, by the way, on the aluminum thing, I had a chance to do a little quick research. Uh, 5083 H321 or 5086 H32 would be good, uh, possibilities for the aluminum. Okay? Um, now, what I really came to talk about again is giving away public land. Uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I commend you on what you just said earlier about low hanging fruit. Here's your opportunity. We got some very low hanging fruit here on beachside. We have now no access to the river. The last piece was inadvertently giveaway. Now, I did hear the rescind word tonight from the, uh, city attorney and so that's, uh, shows that it's at least on your mind and some of the prior discussion we heard does fall along those lines. For example, if I applied for licenses in the state of Florida and said, my name is John Doe, my address is 301 South Ridgewood, and you saw that, you might say that that license is invalid. Same thing applies when you get a false application or vacation of property and it says that, uh, certain situations exist that didn't exist, certain, uh, rules that were not followed, such as following the, uh, city comprehensive plan. Okay, which was very clearly, as I stated in the last meeting on a policy 132, it says very clearly that the city is to ensure that there's access with a minimum of every mile. You just gave away the last piece on the beachside. Um, so with, with that said, I see it as a very easy choice to rescind this. That would be the easy way. Otherwise, I, I assure you, we, the citizens, are not going away and this will get bigger and bigger. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview. Uh, Mayor, respectfully, I'd like to, uh, address the elephant in the room. Uh, nine years ago, you and I spoke on the sidewalk in front of my house. You were running for, uh, mayor of the city of Daytona Beach. And when we spoke, you said you knew who I would vote for. And I said, no, I haven't made a decision on who I'm going to vote for. And I told you why. I had a choice between someone who disliked me because of the color of my skin or someone who disliked me because of my religion. It was a difficult choice and I would have to make a choice on who would be best for the city. All right? Race is a big thing with me. In the 60s, when I sat at the, those lunch counters with Maria and Anna Pearl, it was for equality. In the late 60s, when the dean of the college came to me because I had the only empty bed in the dorms and he wanted to integrate the dorms, he asked me, would I have a black roommate? And I said, yes. At no point did I think that would ever come to the point where there was black preference. And that's what's happening. Over the years, constantly race is popping up. When Charles Cherry said the city is 80% black and he wanted to fire white department heads and replace them with blacks, we did it. We hired eight blacks in a row. Paula walks in and the first thing she says is, I went to my first staff meeting and there were all white men. She called Betty Goodman a white man. Okay, Jennifer Thomas is not a white man. Percy Williams is not a white man, but she thought they were. You did it yourself, twice in the last year. Ruth was adamant that we not have the plaque on the beachside, so I'm strong. And in your closing comment, you said, oh, it doesn't matter that he was corrupt. He was good for blacks. And you voted yes on that.
Who said that?
You did.
Well, you didn't say that. I never said he was good for blacks.
Yes, you did.
And that same way, that you're saying. But what are you talking about, John?
And that, wait, let me finish, Mayor. It is free speech.
Yeah.
When we had an opening for police chief, okay, race was again brought in. Even though both Mike and Craig both said he was the most qualified and that we should not go out for police-
And who brought race in?
You did.
That's a lie.
You-
I never brought race in because he was, I never said anything about his race. That is a lie. It is an outright lie.
You did.
What I said-
Your sister came out and said, we would not be a great city until we had a black police chief.
I never said that.
And you said-
It is a bold-faced lie.
That's a lie. I'd never said that.
You stand before us and you lie.
I am not lying.
You stand before us and you lie. It is a matter of public record.
It is not.
What you say at this time are lies.
I don't care. Who tells you?
Your time is up.
Okay.
Your time is up and you lie.
Don't say any racism, but we go-
I, I've never said anything about race. You brought it in here. Get out. Your time is up. Your time is up. Two minutes and 30 seconds. Get out. Your time is up. You lie.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Mayor and City Commissioner, I'm here tonight too to talk about you giving away our public land and, uh, we don't have access to the river. We tax paying residents and we should have access to this public land. You gave it away. The public was not contacted and that was clearly unfair. It is clear that you gave this land away without regard of our citizens who pay the taxes here in this city. This is a disgrace. In the future, you need to stop this. You need to do the right thing and stop giving away our public land. Also, I'm concerned about the fact that we don't have access to our city commissioners and mayor. In the past, when Richard was here and Scarlett Gold and then Charles Cherry, we had access to all of our public officials. This is not happening now. I had meetings with my representative. She didn't show up. She said in that meeting, let's set up another meeting, but she never did. So I meant, I am disgusted with the fact that we elect you to represent our residents. We're paying high water bills. Every year, we get an increase on our water bills. My water bill is reach, is very high and it's, and I'm the only one that's using the water. I'm not happy about this. So if we elect you to represent us, we should have accessibility to you. At the county level, I'm on three, I have been attended on three boards there, the library board. I was able to get a, a black manager at the Bankdory Library. That had never happened. Also, I'm on the Children in Service Board where we have access to budget and we're giving out monies to these different agencies all over Volusia County. The county of Volusia's representatives are doing outstanding and excellent work as far as accessibility to our, uh, their constituents. Billy Wheeler, who I helped elected and all of my candidates won. And that burden, all of them, they have, we have access to these. So my thanks to you tonight. Be accessible to the residents who are paying your salary. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know what-
And our final speaker tonight is Ann Ruby.
Pissed me off. He tried to-
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I like the idea of having, um, an informed discussion on closing bars earlier. I think to make that discussion more fruitful, it would be very useful to have some kind of a presentation or information on what's a restaurant, what's a bar, what does it take to be licensed? You know, if you're full liquor, you got to go through the state. If you're beer and wine, maybe through the county. Um, what are the requirements for serving food? Like how many places do we have on the beachside that are, well, not just beachside, that are saying they're a bar or a restaurant so they can stay open till 3? Like, we need to know the situation on the ground and not just, you know, what the actual licensing looks like, how many businesses there are, and then what their actual functionality is. I don't hang out in a lot of these places, particularly not at 2:00 AM. Um, but my understanding is there are places that say they are restaurants. They don't really have food and that somehow that allows them certain, not privileges, but rights. So I think to have a fully informed discussion, that would be useful information in an inventory format along with their business hours. Thank you.
And I will take that comment and say that it may not be two weeks that we could have a discussion. It may be four weeks. And I, I said, I will take that and say that it may not be two weeks, but it may be four weeks before we could be prepared for a discussion or longer, but not too much longer than that because I would like to have a great in, informed discussion so that we can make the best possible decision for our whole city. Uh, tonight is my little sister's birthday and, uh, to the little girl who helped inspire love of literacy and language in her big brother, I say happy birthday.
Thank you.
And good night to Daytona Beach.